Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Special Meeting of June 4, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Schuler.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Heuchla.
I am here. Thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Agenda item number one: Consideration of Adoption, Rejection, Amendment, and/or Postponement of the FYE 2025 City of Norman Proposed Operating and Capital Budgets and Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau Incorporated FYE 2025 Budget with Detailed Annual Plan of Work. I need a motion to approve or reject the FYE.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have motion and second. Thank you. We will consider each of the amendments one at a time. I realize there are some amendments coming. And recognize Councilmember Grant for the First Amendment.
I move that grammatical and typographical corrections to the budget documents with no financial impact be made as necessary.
Second.
Have motion and second. So I can read that. Do you have that written out? Oh, that's, you already put it there. Thank you. She had a second. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this amendment. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to comment?
No.
Excellent. I need comments for council regarding this amendment. Hearing none. Motion on the floor is to approve making grammatical and typographical corrections to the budget documents as necessary. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to make grammatical and typographical corrections to the budget documents as necessary passed unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I will recognize Councilmember Peacock for the next amendment.
Thank you. I move that projected revenues in the University North Park Tax Increment Finance District Fund be reduced by $200,000 due to the termination of University North Park Business Improvement District Assessments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. Cynthia Rogers.
Cynthia Rogers, Ward 4. Sorry. I had a question about, so there's not going to be a bid district in the UMP TIF, so I guess that's TIF number two. So where, who's going to pay to do the maintenance and the landscaping and all this stuff that's happening there? And how does that impact the rest of the budget? Thank you.
No other public comments, mayor?
Yes, so I had similar questions to Ms. Rogers. Yeah, wanting, because I was under the impression that we had talked about this, that there was an intent to continue the Business Improvement District. What is the plan for that? Is that coming forward maybe in another amendment future on in the cycle of the budget? And then again, what is the impact to the general fund?
Your honor, I have an answer to that. I'll ask Mr. Francisco to clean this up for me if I miss a piece. So in the original plan documents, that bid was set to expire on June 30, and it will. The reestablishment of that Business Improvement District may come back, and there is a conversation with the property owners. Will there be one big TIF, or, excuse me, one big bid to smaller bids? And the ownership of the final piece of property to the north is unknown yet. So there will be a Business Improvement District. It will come back before council. They're just working on kind of the final configuration of what that Business Improvement District may look like and what it may include.
Okay, so follow up to that. That's all in relation to what potentially could happen for the north side with the creation of the new TIF, number four, five. Do we have any indication whether if that does not get passed or go through, that they will create a new bid on the current TIF district, District Number Two?
That is correct, and that was confirmed with the majority of the property owners south of Rock Creek.
Okay.
So it'll just come back as a brand new one since this one is expiring.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager, what is the advantage of having one bid over having two bids up there?
Perhaps ease of administration and the coordination, or instead you wouldn't necessarily be co-mingling funds, you would just have a larger pot of money if you had one big one. If you had two separate, they may have different missions and different focuses and potentially two separate checkbooks.
That makes sense. Thank you. Councilmember Peacock, did you have any other that you wanted to add? The motion on the floor is to reduce projected revenues in the University North Park Tax Increment Finance District Fund by $200,000. Park Business Improvement District Assignments. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the amendment passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll recognize Councilmember Montoya for the next amendment.
I move that the allocations to the Capital Improvement Projects Fund be reduced by $204,995 to remove the traffic at 36th Avenue Northwest and Tecumseh Road. This is to correct a inadvertent double counting of this item.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, have motion and second. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak on this?
Sir, we do. Cynthia Rogers.
I should sit closer. Thank you for that explanation. I didn't understand what was there, and I guess I wanted to know if this was part, this project was part of the remaining money in TIF number two. That's a project I'm waiting to spend down the balance there. Didn't see a map, so I don't know off the top of my head. Thank you.
This project is outside of the boundaries of TIF II. 36th Avenue is to the west of the boundaries of the project area of TIF II.
Yes, sir. Okay. Counsel, seeing none. The motion on the floor is to reduce allocations to the Capital Improvement Project Funds by $204,995 to remove a traffic project at 36th Avenue Northwest and Tecumseh Road. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been passed, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Recognize Councilmember Holman for the next amendment.
Thank you. I move that projected Public Transportation Fund revenues be increased by $496,189 to reflect anticipated increases in Federal Transit Administration grant revenues. I further move to increase Public Transportation Fund allocations by $751,718, to fund continued operations of the microtransit program.
Second. Have motion and second. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak on this?
I'm Dan Munson from Ward 6. So from FY 20 to FY 21, the federal government has spent $69.5 billion in operations of public transit. The normal spend in FY 19 was 12 billion, so they've spent significantly more money since the pandemic. We've been a beneficiary of some of those operating dollars, and if I'm doing the math correctly on this, we would have to come out of the general fund $255,000. I'm not in favor of that. What I am in favor of is coming out of the general fund $27,000. The remaining money would come from OU, so we would ask OU to contribute $250,000 instead of $112,000. And then we would increase the cost for the ride from $2 to $5. So that would be a $90,000 swing to the good. We need to protect our general fund. When I look at the transit budget, I'm seeing a capital expenditure of $22,500 on it. We normally spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in capital, so I don't think that number is even real. I think we just picked the number and we put it in the budget. My guess is that the transit program will be back here during the next fiscal year asking for additional money out of the transit fund coming from the general fund specifically for capital. So I don't, I don't think that that is going to be even close. If you look at the University of Oklahoma, they're doing 700,000 rides on the cart system. I think we're going to finish up at about 360-ish thousand. When you compare that to Ames, Iowa, who is also a college town, they've got about 52,000 residents. They do 4.4 million rides. So if you add our rides in addition to OU's rides, we're barely a quarter of what they're doing. So we definitely need to protect our general fund. And then if we look at the operating budget for OU, so I'm asking us to go to OU and ask for money. That's what I'm asking. Their annual operating budget is 1.4 billion. They receive $49.5 million in ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Waterhouse, you signed up at the back. Did you have, but you didn't pick an item?
I'm sorry.
You signed the list that you wanted to speak, but you didn't pick which item you wanted to speak to.
Yes, I didn't know what this meeting was about, other than I called in to see if there was a meeting tonight. There's a 200 budget, and I just didn't know what to say, but I guess there's no U fans here because we're in the World Series up here, 1942, and here I am. Anyways.
Would you like to speak to this particular amendment?
And I just had a couple of questions of who's going to be running the show up there at Financial District and taking care of that, of all the going on. Is it going to be the City of Norman, or do they have contractors, or?
Sir, your question has to be germane to reducing or moving money, basically, putting, increasing $496,189 increase and then a $751,718 increase. Are your questions?
Is it the City of Norman then, or?
It, no, sir.
Okay.
It just, is your, is your question germane to this question?
The only reason I ask, because they, this is my third time up here, and the first time I came was because I, there was no parking at the $30 million legacy park up there. This is three years after it was open and, you know, it should have been taken care, but it wasn't. And I came in here, and you guys weren't here, but the people who were here, I shamed every one of them into getting something done. And a couple of months later, we have a parking lot out there now with 30 parking spaces, 10 of them handicapped, by the way, which we had zero before I said something. And then, the last time I was here, mentioned the, the pool, the swimming pool out there, which they were supposed to powder coat the thing, and they end up spray painting it. It's a quarter of a million dollar fupa. And who, who pays for this? I mean, who's, it's, this is a bond deal and everything like this?
Yes, sir. Sir, you're out of order, because what we're doing is answering questions on this part of the budget instead of re-
People in jail, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know, maybe I'll have to check my home cards or something like that and talk with you guys later.
Thank you, sir. No more, but, any more comments out of council? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I was just going to see if the, our transit staff, Taylor, might want to answer a few questions or respond, and maybe just clarify what this is as well with the microtransit program and so on.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman and rest of council. So every year, we get an allocation from FTA based on our census data, and combined with the census data update from the 2020 census accounting for this, for that, for the first year this upcoming year, as well as additional funding from the bipartisan infrastructure law, we're getting an increase of that amount in our annual grant. So that's why we're coming to you to increase that revenue. And then, obviously, we've been talking about the microtransit budget and how it was not in the, in the budget, so we're, we're coming back to place that back in the budget. Our hope is that the increase in the annual grant will offset some more embark Norman costs for that service, and then the local public transit sales tax will be able to pay for that microtransit program more, so we wouldn't have to ask for the general fund for as much if, if any.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Now, do I have to take these as one question, or can I break it up into two questions? The motion is one question.
Yeah, we can do one question.
Okay. I, Councilmember Holman, in your, in thinking about this, we talked about the idea of microtransit expanding, and then we've also talked about the idea of it going back. The cost of it being almost $800,000 to me is excessive. I understand what Taylor's saying. I understand what we're wanting to do, but in my opinion, that's just too, too much money out of us to be able to do that. I realize we get grant money, but it costs us money to get money. And so would you, would you be amenable to breaking this into two questions, the first question and the second question, so we can vote on them separately? Or do you want them voted on as separate entities?
I don't mind if they're, I don't mind if they're voted on separately.
Separately? Do you have a second? Well, I could second it.
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to pose this as two questions. First off, that we moved that projected transportation fund revenues be increased by $496,189 to reflect anticipated increases in the Federal Transit Administration grant revenues. Councilmembers, you may cast
All votes have been cast, and the motion to increase the Public Transportation Fund revenues by $496,189 to reflect anticipated increases in Federal Transit Administration grant revenues passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to take the second. And further move to increase public transportation fund allocations by $751,718 to fund continued operations of the microtransit program. Is there any further discussion on that from anybody? All right, then councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes, our votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote to eight, of eight to one.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Recognize Councilmember Nash for the next amendment. There we go. Thank you.
I move to increase the general fund allocations to the Information Technology Department by $233,000 for the estimated maintenance fee increases on city software applications.
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for this amendment? Nobody signed up. Any comments from council on this? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to increase the general fund allocations to the Information Technology Department by $233,000 for the, for estimated maintenance fees increases on city software applications. Councilmembers, you can cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the amendment passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Recognize Councilmember Schuler for the next amendment.
I move to increase Capital Improvements Project Fund allocations by $968,883 to fully fund the Lower Imhoff Creek Bank stabilization project. This allocation reimburses ARPA funds that were transferred to the Emergency Communication and Operations Center project. So we're basically reallocating this money back to the Lower Imhoff Creek project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Has anybody signed up to comment from the public? Is anybody, council, any comments? Excellent. The motion on the floor is to reduce the Capital Improvement Project Fund allocations by $968,833 to fully fund the Lower Imhoff Creek Bank stabilization project. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes, the amendment passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I recognize Councilmember Ball for the next amendment.
Thank you, sir. I move that projected wastewater reclamation fund revenues be decreased by $775,000 to reflect lower growth rate assumptions.
Have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for this?
Yes, Cynthia Rogers.
It only took me three tries to get a little closer. I guess I just had questions about in particular what growth rate assumptions we're talking about here, so I didn't have the details of that. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco?
In this case, the growth rate assumptions relate to the growth rate in the customer base for the wastewater recommendation enterprise. So based on the AIM Norman growth rate assumptions, we believe that the growth rate will slow in the customer base, and so that's why this is being reduced.
Questions from council or comments from council? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Schuler.
Yeah, so just to clarify, because I think we had in our, one of our budget meetings more recently, we talked about this. So I don't know if our director of utilities wants to come up, Chris Mattingly, just to explain kind of what's coming forward, and then kind of what we're going to see from Raptilis and some studies moving forward with our different utilities and some recommendations based on these projections.
Right. Kind of what Anthony was saying, all of the funds, we want it to reflect the AIM growth at 1.5, 1.6 percent, and this one inadvertently was at the 3-point something percent, and that fund is very low on balance, so was very optimistic that that much money was actually going to come in. So we're just putting them all back to a 1.5, 1.6 percent of what we're actually have been seeing in the last 10 years.
Okay. The motion on the floor is to decrease projected wastewater reclamation fund revenues by $775,000 to reflect the lower growth rate, lower growth rate assumptions. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes, amendment passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Recognize Councilmember Foreman for the next amendment.
Okay, for the last time, I move that general fund allocations to the City Manager Department be increased by $75,600 to fully fund an assistant city manager position.
Second. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for this amendment?
We do. Dan Munson.
Dan Munson, Ward 6. So I, I support this with one possible change. Wanted to- Wanted to know if the assistant city manager would be getting a car allowance or a car from the city. I'm in favor of that, so recommended car allowance, 500 a month, or City of Norman automobile to drive. So she's going to be taking the place of Mr. Pyle when he's away on vacation, at conferences, at training, so I think that she should have transportation. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Manager?
Well, thanks, Dan, you're putting crazy ideas in her head, but no, I appreciate that. And yes, those are exactly the duties that she will be undertaking in my absence, instead of that duty getting passed around to whichever director is closest that day, those duties will fall on to Ms. Shannon Stevenson. I'm sure she wouldn't reject that motion, but that was not requested.
Well, I have a motion and second. Are there any further comments from council?
The way I described Mr. Munson, or the way I understand it, that would be $6,000 a year, is that what I understand? Would this be an appropriate time to amend the motion?
You may, if you wish.
I would like to amend the motion to include an additional $6,000 for vehicle allowance.
Do I have a second for the amendment?
Second.
I hear it, okay, good. That would mean that the motion now reads, let's see, 76,200. The motion now reads, the motion on the floor is to increase the general fund allocations to the city manager department by $76,200 to fully fund an assistant city manager position. Is that correct?
Should be 81,600.
81,600. I've got to learn how to spin. 81,600. 81,600. I added 600 instead of 6,000, lousy accounting. All right, I will reread it correctly. The motion on the floor is to increase the general fund allocations to the city manager department by $81,600 to fully fund an assistant city manager position. Is that correct?
Do we need to clarify that?
We really need to vote on Matt's motion first.
Okay, okay. Six thousand, okay, sorry, getting it out of order. The motion on the floor is to increase the general fund allocation by $6,000 for the assistant city manager's position's vehicle. That's correct? All right. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote on the amendment.
All votes have been cast and the motion to add an additional $6,000 for car allowance passes unanimously.
All right, so now we go to the regular, right? Motion on the floor is to increase the general fund allocations to the city manager department by $81,600 to fully fund. The members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the amended motion passes unanimously.
Excellent. You going to get her a pink Corvette? This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding the budget as amended. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers signed up? None. Motion on the floor is to approve the 2025 operating in capital budgets and the Norman Convention Visitors Bureau FYE 2025 budget and detailed annual plan of work as amended. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. That brings us to one of our favorite things to do, we are adjourned.